He said that Liberia has over 120 tonnes, thousand tonnes of rice that can take up from now until June. The 25 kg rice that was, that is being discussed now, we have up to June, we have enough stock in our warehouse to take up to this at this negotiator price. Why now? We have not reached June with the available rice in store, with the warehouse being stocked out. Those of all that know, those of all that don't, are even, I mean, if they try and promote them, we know the way, we know when you can restock. So the president, after he issued that executive order, the minister and the negotiator, I mean, the importer negotiated to retain and maintain price at this $16.5 cents. The same price. Now, we have not gone anywhere. They said if we just in May, he has come to say because of the issues in India, the price of rice have increased. So we, in our own honesty, how does this affect the rice that already there is stock? So it's important for us to get the commerce minister here to tell us what informed his decision to increase the price of rice after he had told us before that the rice is, we have enough rice that will take up to June, even if we can start to import the rice. So it's important to do that.
Thank you, thank you. Honorable Deputy Speaker. Honorable Deputy Speaker, we will, the chair will see for us, uh, Osti Tera is birthday. His birthday gift by recognizing, Obutela, Obu Yar, Obu Fumo. Uh, the birthday. Today is Supreme of the Cherry Apple, Osti Tera birthday today. As a real honor.
Their cause is to put in, uh, the influence into the price of rice.
Yes, Osti Tera, we, we, uh, although, although Lutos, although Lutos College, you just got a session, we'll recognize all the Williams, just wait. So Obutela, Obutela, Obu Fumo, in our honor, we will get the negotiator. Okay, Yar before Afre, before Afre before Yar.
So, Honorable Deputy Speaker, please, just need to give special, Obu Musa Pera Tero, will also celebrate your preach, just be special, little bit, like dedicated show here today. We love you.
Honorable Deputy Speaker, Honorable Co-Residing, thank you very much to give an opinion on this matter, which is very much important to ourselves and our constituents, as rice remains a staple food of our country at last. Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, we know very well that in August of 2023, 2023, the Indian government, the Indian government decided to increase tariffs on non-basemaxi rice, which was the Indian model boy, I'm a sixty-four rice from India coming to West Africa. And the reason was, the reason was triggered by the fact that India was going through a drought. And so the government had increased the export tariff on rice until March 2023. Within this period, the importers had, at that particular time, informed the Liberian government. And together with them, they have agreed to increase the price of rice to around $16.50. Now, going forward, Honorable Deputy Speaker, we already have in place an executive order that, that would not, that gave leverage to importers, exempting them from paying import duties on the importation of rice already. So at this point, it baffles me that the Commerce Minister will come out to increase the price of rice, stating that they have an increment on the international market, starting with from India, especially that most of our rice, ninety plus percent of our rice we consume in this country is imported from India. Uh, the last time I checked, the last time I checked, I found that the only time that the Indian government had an increase on, of the, in I'm a sixty-four rice was in August 2023. And up to now, there has been no further increase of export tariff from India. We also know that freight charges, freight represents the transportation of rice by sea from, from, from the country of origin to the destination. So we know that freight charges as well, from that time up to now, has not been affected in any way. So, uh, the international market for rice still remains around 500 to 550 US dollars at the CIF cost insurance and freight rates. So when you calculate, you still be around $13 plus, around $13 per 25 kg rice. So it surprises me to know that the measure of commerce still comes out at this time where I do not find any information whatsoever on the, on the international wires or from India. To know that the Indian government has had an increase in, in, in contribution to what he said yesterday, that there is an increase from India. So the Commerce Minister will now have to come to tell us when the Indian government uh, implemented this increase. But as far as we know for the fact there has been no increase. And what I know is that the importers are playing deceit with this because they are playing with the market and they just want to put pressure. Uh, for us, for our information, additional information here is that the importers right now, who are only allowed to import rice on the market. So as a result, we have this semi kind of monopolies, where when the importers think there should be an increase, the government is pushed to the wall and have no other option but to agree with them and to have an increase. The importers enjoy a tax-free system, a duty-free system, they input rice without duty. They have a market that is stable, a rice market that is stable currently. So we need to understand from the Commerce Minister as to what is triggering his decision to increase the price of rice, as this is our staple food and this doesn't also well for our suffering masses. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Obutela, you had your birthday, so I was a kid for you. Obu, Obu Yar Fumo, then Afre, we get a most important thing. Uh, I'm seeing, uh, Obu Soko Kala, I hope you believe your research properly, because we can't.
Honorable Deputy Speaker, Honorable Presiding, distinguished colleagues. Uh, let me take this time to extend thanks and appreciation to our two colleagues who professed the communication that we are currently debating. I want to join others who have spoken previously that the issue of rice is considered, rice as a commodity is considered one of the political commodities in Liberia. And so, uh, all of us must be watchful as to how we handle the situation because if it is not properly handled and addressed, it will inflict situation and at the end of the day, the masses we represent will also suffer. I want to proffer here that while we support this communication and the appearance of the Commerce Minister, I will also suggest that our invitation should be prescriptive as to what we want the minister to provide in terms of helping ourselves to understand fully the situation and also for the audience to also understand the situation. Against this backdrop, any invitation that we be sending to the Minister of Commerce should be prescribed in terms of empirical data that making him to take such a decision. Because if these data are provided, they will help us understand as to whether the risk is need for an increment or not. Secondly, we also need to engage the vendors, those who are importing the rice to the country. Let them establish clear to this honorable body their own constraints in terms of their costs that are associated with the importation of rice that will also warranting their decision. Because we don't want a situation where importers will be blackmailing the government and pressuring the government to the extent where it will happen to strike our population. So that's my own contribution to the debate this afternoon. Thank you so much for your opportunity. Give me some money.
Honorable Deputy Speaker, Co-Presiding, uh, hello colleagues. I think we are not looking at the past. In Liberia, we killed 120 because of price. Lot of citizens die in this country during the war, in devastation because of rice. They will follow this country, Liberia, need to produce so we can have full security in our country. This is not a political party issue. Uh, during early Johnson's, at the time, the United Party, rest was $13. And we are trying to give up to $17. So why should we be looking at political party? Because we are not producing our staple food in this country. We keep experiencing what is unfolding here now. If rice increases in China and that of India, we will experience it in Liberia. So this government acting, the left leaders need to pressureize the executive so we can have a budget set so to produce rice on a large scale, on a market large scale to, to make Liberia full stable. Look at Ukraine right now, as Ukraine is fighting for almost, almost years. There is full security, they are producing their own food. So let us start to produce rice on the vast scale, on the market large scale so our citizens can stop suffering. It will keep looking at the importation of rice every time, our people will suffer. We can remember the food importation, the rice importation, and I heard government used to add additional money to the vendors so that the, the, the rice price can't lie in this country. We need to stop it and concentrate on producing rice on the market large scale in Liberia and we have to alleviate the food shortage of rice in this country. Yeah, thank you.
So, thank you for following our man in this place, for our way here in the chemos of the first representative.
I remember I recall to layer one to top. Musa, Musa was representative, lots of time. Musa was speaker. So Musa, please, please, like you say, his Musa congratulations for the dedication of the place. For the people of this country, no more.
So, but on the statement, on the statement.
Wish you well. Thank you, thank you, Honorable Deputy Speaker and Co-Presiding. I think, uh, first let me thank our colleagues, our brothers, communication. But at some point in time, Honorable Presiding, we have to, we have to begin to, to lead this country. I think what we are doing now, it just, uh, we have created two twins government, CDC and United Party, and they are just repeating after each other. As people, as law makers, rice has been a problem in this country since 1979. And shamefully, as a country, we still have not found the answer to it. And we are here as representative of the people, of a community that we have no control over. And instead of debating the price of rice, the economy shows that we are losing as a country 280 million United States dollars to buy rice. The biggest pressure on the Liberian dollar that continue to devalue the Liberian dollar is the importation of rice. And we sit down here discussing on the price of rice from different men country so that when they make a decision in that country, they affect us. I think it's a shame and we need to find a solution. And the only solution for the issue of rice is that as a country, God has given us a soy that has the capacity to give up the rice that we need. Unless we can decide to grow our own rice, we must start talking about the price of rice. There is nothing here we are at large, uh, people, and not to this government because United Party was specialized in criticizing CDC for the same price of rice. So CDC criticize United Party today, the country is caught in a web of two parties and they are just playing on as a ball. We need to find a solution. There is no threat to national security, I can say so, as regard the price of rice. Anybody who feel that rice price is high, come follow me, let go to Libya, we make more rice.
Thank you.
Okay, we should not be discussing rice price. We have no control over how much rice goes in this country. Let's deal with it as a people.
Thank you, people, God, this discussion, we understand, uh, we bring recommendations for the future. I will call you talking about medical funding, but we're talking about immediate approach as it relates to impacting the course of rice, that was the essence of this communication. So I know when the ministers will come, these are recommendations or suggestions that will refer to the Ministry of Agriculture, the Ministry of Commerce. So let's have the discussion in context. Although, second, we will give out three five colleagues and then we have a main former. Although, Fagai, Fekai, although Williams, although Cook, although Avan, although Kusfa. All the children will receive, they will lay on your desk. Yeah, 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 you can still. Although, Fagai. Please give the Honorable the back, although Fakai. The first female must speak on this subject matter, so colleagues, please, pay attention. Colleague, Honorable, Honorable colleague, please, Honorable Asher, amen. Honorable Copa, I come here on the fact that, Honorable, we are on the Copa, please. Honorable, I was true, Honorable, scripty, please, have a seat. Yeah, please, just leave it alone. Please, Honorable Copa, please have your seat, man. That's girl, the Honorable colleague, the female colleague, she has to make her case, please. She needs to make a presentation on this subject matter. Although, Fagai, colleagues.
Yeah, yeah. I'm glad to, I'm sure to him. And we got a little bit of agriculture. So, we are not experiencing like production of rice in this country. And so, we are making a rise before we can afford. While the, while the minister of Commerce is, he needs to open the market. If we get more than us, there will be a competition. Or if the market is not open for more people to do business, they feel hard to the vendors, importers. They will have control over the market. So, we need to get into stand and so that we can suggest to them. Then you open the market to more than us. If I can hear, it's not a political country that will be seen as. China is there, but when the market is opening, people will go on out, vendors will go on out and get the rice to bring it. And when they bring it, everyone want their market to go. They will be reasonable, eating, uh, 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 making the price. So, he needs to come and tell us how he going to, you know, continue with this kind of thing. Because our people will not like this, we ourselves. If our people are not happy, it means that we not in happiness. Being that rice is very, very stable in this country, we need to work together so that rice will be provided, so will be, so at a reasonable price for our people. Thank you.
Especially from Musa Pera Tero, his new ambition is divine.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Presiding, Co-Presiding, I want to take this time to, to make my case. And I think the decision by the Commerce Minister is a complete provocation to our people and a disrespect to this office by the way, as a people deputy. Uh, for example, the Minister of Commerce, Alfonso Manu, yesterday, and just came up and said, we need to free the price without even consulting the people deputies. I see that as a disrespect of us, that's fine. The servant even does speak up to some other people, for example, if the rice is being sold for 18.5, I can assure you, the four less we import will be around 6.5 dollars. The road to the very light county is not easy. So, I live in the southeast county or the country I have with, we find it more difficult. So, Mr. Speaker, I hope we are, I tell colleagues, I think the issue of that price something is very important. I, I listen to, although Musa Pera Tero is talking about, we have no control. But I assure that we have no control, but the man informing which the process of being conducted is going to have problem with you. So if we have a participatory discussion around the rest price, I think the, the committee of commerce that is here, who have been informing us in the, in the area that we do know as to whether how the product will be increasing, how, you know, how will benefit. But all, but all, but all of such, once you know we get a word on, one command minister is on a one air condition and just come out and say, look, 18.5 cents, that's a terrible fact of this body. And I hope you say, very strong, Mr. Speaker, you know, call the command minister here. You're telling that the decision that he took, that decision is unacceptable and let us revise it and point in the Parry Passo.
Thank you, Parry Passo. Honorable, Honorable, Honorable. Honorable, Richard, man. Honorable, Deputy Speaker, Honorable, Co-Presiding, fellow colleagues. Let me take my colleague for bringing such communication before, but can I to give another information? The minister is willing to come. Calling the neighbor on the cheapest place, although Lutos College, although, although, please. The minister is willing to come and make, give more clarity, and make more clarity on the issue. But let me just, let me just come in with few things that I know of that we as a government be working to work. There's, uh, there, there, the other level, the level of stock now, from now to June. It will be as days who are any other input. It may for now, it resume or seems to be like a shortage. And, and our consumption for the level of stock that is available now, from now to June, if we don't have another importation before that time, we fall into some shortage. So the price, the price that is being proposed, it is not the price now for rice. That price was proposed on the basis of the, of the discussion. That price of proposed on the basis. Honorable, Richard, what are you saying, is a proposal, a. The proposed, the proposed, colleagues, please, please, you need to please, please, back to the emotions out of the conversation, Honorable, Honorable, Richard. When you listening to the press conference, when you listening to the press conference? They said a proposal or it is in fact. It was an amount proposed in the place, in the conference, of the importers. I'm asking this question with emphasis because this is basically. Yes, it was an amount proposed during the conversation with those importers. And basically, based on this volume of stock, that's the price of the proposed to avoid shortage. So, one of the major. Can we speak on the revenue, yes, they still at $16.50 as. Yes, because, yes, yes. So, don't let me, give me, give me about text there, I mean four, give me about text there, I mean four. I gotta let you know. So the, the Commerce Minister and a lot of the importers are meeting to, there to finalize the issue. And the final, and the Commerce Minister. We have to give them more clarity. The Commerce Minister, we will give them more clarity, this is my government. Am I taking information, this is my government? So, I will write text me. So the, the Commerce Minister is visiting with all of those importers today to finalize the issue related to the price or have got the control of the issue as shortages. If they have been calling the previous government, see nothing happen, we have to, we have to, there's shortages for importers, to, to, to balance the prices at the time. And he said, well, I want the price you propose, the shortages, or, or, you know, man. So, during the previous government, during the previous government, we propose shortages. Under speak, information denied. We propose shortages at the time, because come and assume. Honorable, Tifa, Honorable, Tifa, please, under see. Where's your head, you do recognize the speed, Honorable Tifa. The chair will have the option, okay, have a seat. Honorable, Tifa, please, so. As we, as we are aware that this country will spend annually 280 billion one million just to import rice. In our rest agenda to control this particular problem, we intend to cover a bill for the unfortunate four children. That will also help us to control some things that will yield everything, we don't have to pull all the rest package out of government. We don't have to draw a rest package. We are not self-sustentable. I gave you careful information. I gave you careful information. Honorable, Tifa, Honorable, Tifa, Honorable, Tifa, please, you can give the story that's great. The chair will have the option of the, of the Tifa. Honorable, Tifa, please. Honorable, I was, I was, this one, and I'm, um. Remember for rice? Then we have the best part of the. I must suffer this one. You can't do that. The same case, they both said, they both said, this summer. Say, you know, rescue.
And when said, this is.
You said rescue, rescue what? I get five hours, if you don't know, I get five, I get five. Yeah, I see, I kill a rescue, I got the gun, let's press up, I got the gun, let's press up. Honorable, Tifa, Honorable, Tifa, Honorable, Tifa, please. Against our people, every can rest, press up. Honorable, Tifa, please. Honorable, Tifa, please. I get five facts, I get five facts. So that allow the capacity of as you have, Honorable, Tifa. Honorable, Tifa, Honorable, Tifa, please. Honorable, Tifa, please, I press the door. Honorable, Tifa, please, I press the chair, please. I will speak, please, I will speak, allow the police to speak, again, of course. I will advise you, you should. I will advise, I will advise. It's because. I will speak, please, under speak. I will speak, I will, I will, I will, please, under speak. You just gonna get, Ousabere just gonna get a push yesterday. You just gonna get a push yesterday. So, this is a, you are under speak. Ousabere, you want a power, please. I love you. Polly, if you are myself, this time in the school, you have been recognized to speak on this subject matter. Please, allow your colleague to speak. Ousabere spoke to let this guy in the school. We call it, I will. Ousabere, we gave it a disposition, I will, thank you, you just gonna get a piece yesterday. This guy is very nice, I will pray for him.
Co-officer, Polly. To provide the issue of rest is very important. A political commodity in our country, I wouldn't want to go back to the history because you have been saying about our, our police. Oh, Mr. President, co-officer. When the president of the Republic of Liberia issues an executive order. It means that he uses portion of the legislative power. Because, before laws are made in this country. They should go through the legislature, or when an opinion of the Supreme Court is handed over, it becomes a law. So, when the president of the Republic of Liberia uses an executive order, the executive order lasts for one year. It is good, the colleague from, from Brigitte Rais, executive order one twenty five that was issued. Yes, the fifteenth of this month, of March, sorry. When executive order are issued, it means that those that are in the sector may have informed. The president before that executive order is issued. The executive order was issued to stipulate a rest price in our economy. Because rest is a political commodity. Mr. President, let me go back to twenty eighteen.
Please, please, Polly, please. Please, Polly, please. Why, I will, I will, I will, boy. Not one minute, not one minute left, I will do, one minute left. You are just where I do get the stop test.
So, Mr. President, let me take this back to twenty eighteen. Mr. President, the CDC government was able to maintain red press as thirteen now fifty cent. For over three years, even during the Corona barrel crisis that was broke up. Rest price was staying meeting at thirteen dollars and fifty cent.
Justify.
Mr. President, I was part of the discussion that took red spread from thirteen now fifty cent to fifteen now fifty cent. And to make that decision, it was very, very critical to me. Mr. President, while you are the honor gentleman from Maryland County. With no increase in tariff, in the price of rice. With no pronouncement made in terms of export tax that is then relied on. To inform the decision, to increase the price, is strongly on the side. And because of the strongly, and because rice is a political commodity, I want to draw the properly of this communication. The honor gentleman from Masarado and the honor gentleman from Grand Passa. So, in fact, before this planning, the Minister of Commerce. To provide for this body, again, I listen to the. So, so, Mr. President, when information are provided here, it should be factual. The honor gentleman that spoke before me, said it was a proposal. How did our police that wrote the communication, cut the information? Because I call you to them, they are saying that the red spread to decrease as of today. They cannot say in our communication, it was a proposal. So, our honor gentleman from.
Thank you, Amashu, Thomas Goso, and then we get this, uh, Asha Polly. I will Goso, we get our time, I will just symbol, I will, I will, I will, I will. Then we find a way forward. Polly, go to the station. We said, I will give you a time, please. You will make the way far, I will speak to you, just be patient, okay?
Mr. President, Mr. President, please, please, Polly. So, um, Mr. President, the issue of price. As is best stated across it, so it's an oldish thing. One of the friends, commend our colleagues for raising the issue on the floor. But. We cannot keep saying and speaking and doing the same thing over and over again, and we expect a different result. Mr. President. Mr. President. The issue of rice, we as lawmakers, legislators, it is incumbent upon us. Especially descriptive legislation, that the arrest agenda was made for two African people. It is incumbent upon us to see how we can turn things around by doing something differently. We cannot be speaking agriculture, and we be working farm in a, in a budget application. So, I give no for agricultural purposes, and then we expect to get different results. People producing the rice in other countries, they have the right to do whatever they want to do. We as the parents, this is about time that we start the check child. And see how we can set the pace to embrace the issue of importing rice inside of growth. Like parents blessed with vast land all over. Why can't we invest into agriculture by placing money into the budget, through the Ministry of Agriculture to have projects in every county? So, I want to join our police, Mr. President. That the Minister of Agriculture before, along with the Minister of Commerce, go lay before this, that they, they know what are planned. And how can we as a very getting far with the issue of growing rice? So that we can be experienced in the same thing, and going by as a political commodity, we have rice right here, people die. That is something that happened way before, and we can't give many on it to set a basis for future. Our rest mandate, yeah.
I will talk, I will symbol, I will order, I will, they will prove, they will prove. And that's the way forward, co-officer, this is your call. Observation denied. I will talk. As we just have posed, the point of billions. I would like to retrospect, put in a, interpose, no objection to these discussions. Allow, just like to use few seconds. To just produce a piece of advice to our folks. We are discussing serious issue that is affecting the Liberian people. The rice issue is not ordinary discussion. I just want to advise a few seconds, let us take away political sentiments. This is not a discussion about CDC against United Party, or United Party against CDC. It is a discussion that affects the Liberian people. How do we find a solution? Is what we supposed to be discussing here today. They bring us nothing, slip on that, the commentary has slipped on that. What is the way down is what we discuss. Thank you, symbol. Thank you, I will symbol, I will base it, and then we, uh, we call, information denied.
I will start, Mr. President, I will start.
Observation denied.
I will start by going back on from the young. Yes, this is beyond politics. Have you, when you campaign against us, you use the price of rice. So, this is also the little, but I'm not going to take the political campaign. You say it's not the political, but you that are competing hard. I have liked also my brother each year, so we have a case. Mr. President. I know some folks may have said some things that I may be saying, but the point is. If nothing has changed that contributes to the price of rice. There should be no reason why there should be a hack in price of rice. From C I value, which talks about cost, insurance, freight, if those things have not changed, you cannot be changing the price of rice. If handling charges. If, if handling charges, at the foot of Monrovia, have not changed, you cannot be changing the price of rice. Mr. President. Since the latter part of the end of the last decade. When we had an associate, this price of rice to fifteen dollars, what do you say, for fifteen dollars? Nothing else have changed, so that you can load it, and that's why it is important for the, uh, Conference Minister to come. But let me say one more thing, Mr. President. Except Liberia, in our subregion, all other countries have duties on rice. And that's why from year on year, the president issues a definite order every year. To put trees on taxes on rice. If the president were not to do that, it means that our rice will be on par with Nigeria and sell again. If you took our fifty kg rice, and you want to plant that in Nigeria, you will be in expensive house. We are just saying to the Commerce Minister, that if all the factors that will affect the price of rice have not changed in anything. Please keep the price of rice where it is. Yes, there are a lot of things you can do, and let me tell you, all the police, when we discuss the budget. When we discuss the budget, we decided that we are going to put three million dollars to start our sea phone, to begin to produce our own rice. The only way we can solve the problem of rice in this country, we have got to be self-sufficient. So, whilst we are with the Commerce Minister, and I like the colleague who said that when we look at the budget, the agriculture minister. So that we can begin a path of solving this long-lasting period. Folks, this issue, it is very critical. The only into a farm right now, one farmer in my district, they are all calling on me, what I mean, what is happening to the price of rice? I have got no answer, because nothing has changed. And until the Commerce Minister come to me, so I can go to the people that are from these people, the rice price will remain as dollars for the dollars. Thank you very much.
Thank you, boyfriend. And then we, you know, we are way forward. This is how we like to. On this subject matter, because we are deliberate, yes. One on the credit. We will, I will base it. I will marry Josie, I'm dealing with our, with our female colleagues. This is how I let a one on the credit on this line, bro. Marry Josie, you are a keeper. Very accurate.
Thanks for following me, thanks for fashion. My name is, my name is Prince Mora, we will be in Chemo's of the House of Women's Assembly. Where members of the House are debating on the current increment into the price of rice. That various. Yesterday, the government like you announced one dollar increment into the price of rice. Increasing our price from seventeen now fifty cents.
Let me take you back to two thousand five, two thousand five, two thousand six.
That had.
The Liberian government slash A D A.
Outcry.
Slash Foya Rice Project.
That was projected. That.
Liberia will produce enough rice, so much more.
To bring them to you.
We will be able to export, right?
This is how we like to go on.
You are not sure, why don't we, why don't we as a body adopt that same plan? And fuse money into mechanized farming and into agriculture? So, we cannot have this conversation over and over and over again. Because of other country to come here and waste our time, uh, uh, discussing our rice. This, this is what, uh, 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 I'm covering. Mechanized farming, let us put our money where our mouth is, let us put more money into farming, arrest.